Okay, great. I would like to call this meeting of the planning board votes hold spring to order. I've got one item I'd like to. But we add to the agenda. For the sixties Belvedere approval. There's some new information. We have about the village boards and get like ability to assign and the timing of their ability to assign a. Preparation fee. So I think we can do. The applicant and. We visit again, we can add an amendment to the approval to allow us to move forward with that without. Without the village board having figured out what exactly what the what the fee is they're gonna set. So can you. Anyone? I want a second that the adding of that.
I second adding that to the to the agenda.
Okay, we'll add it to whole business.
Aye.
All favor. Alright, great, great. Alright, add it to the agenda, we'll talk about it in a bit. But we have one set of minutes, I'm actually not sure who have. Yes, we do have enough people to review the June thirteenth, so.
I guess middle of the second page. It says Henry McCory.
I think we can, we can amend on a sheet, I could sign. The amendments, yeah. He's gonna have a pen, I could borrow.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, so. We'll do. Or, no, we're missing here. Oh, Henry McCory, yeah. You know which, let's hear which, who, which one we're. Do we mean Henry or do we Kevin?
Yeah, we mean Henry.
We mean Henry, okay, so. Let's out. I think some of the. Some feedback on some of the detail in here, so like. Board member, board member Kevin McGory stated that this may open liability issue for the village. I believe Jonathan Wade N. Suggesting that it did not.
Which page is that?
That's the second page, I think generally like. Just making sure that if there is a. For anything that's raised, if there is a. If there's like a tight loop of of this discussion and conclusion, like trying to get. The whole, the whole of it, and that doesn't have to be in insciating detail, but like. In this case, like. Kevin. Said that it might be a liability issue without including Jonathan's. Comment that it, he didn't think it was, it kind of leaves it. Of like. In it, like, it's like, it's like an unknown, it's like, well, maybe it is, like versus versus having, having a judgment in the, in the, in the meeting that, that it was not. A liability issue.
So you, does it need to be removed completely, or would you like that follow up?
No, I think, I think. I can just write in the margin here. I mean, just like, it's not, it's not to be removed, but it's, it's like as an additional thing that. Build attorney. Jonathan DeJoy stated that, you know. He wasn't, he wasn't worried, he didn't think that it was a liability concern. And generally. For any consultants or. Folks that might be advising us, it's really important to get their, it's not, it's not. It's not sufficient just to have the board members comments in the, in the notes, it really has, we need like, like for example, if I, if we asked Will a question. Or made a statement and like Will, the village engineer like corrected us, like, oh, I know. This is like as an example, I think we had a. There was some concern about how up to date the. The twenty five year like scenario was, like, is it, is it like twenty five years? From ten years ago, or is it from now, and Will corrected it, said it's, it's from now, so. Those are, those are the kind of things, I just wanna make sure that. By capturing. Expert opinion in the notes, we're basically, it's a reminder to ourselves about like what we learned. What were like some of the important things that we, that we learned and, and the important. Decision points we, or the informational point that we used to help make decisions, so like in an example here. One might wonder if. Kevin thought it was a liability issue, but we, but we never resolved that, it's like, oh, well, is that still an open, is that still an open question, do we need to follow up on it? And I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm making the edits here in the margins. And I'm signing it, signing each edit. And then I'll find the, the whole thing, and I think that, Jonathan, that should do it for approval, okay.
Did have a question about the public comment, so the one we received on Zoom, I can't quite remember if where. I know they're required to like say their name and address, does that require to be recorded in the minutes as well, or is there some kind of?
Yeah, I mean, if you can, I know sometimes it's hard to hear people mumble, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of times the. The sort, like the, the, the position of the person making the comment. Isn't really important context. To how do we interpret it, right, so like. Let's say somebody from Phillips Town decided, you know what, I'm bored, I'm gonna come down to Phillips Town, I'm gonna come down to the planning board and, and comment about the, the stuff, right? Like, they can have an opinion, they have a right to speak. It doesn't have much bearing on. What, what we think about the, like, how an application might impact neighbors, just then we want the neighbors to say, right, so if we know. That it's a neighbor speaking, that, that is important to capture, because it carries a certain weight to it, that, that another voice wouldn't necessarily.
Is there a meeting on the twenty seventh?
Oh, yes. We don't have, we don't have minutes for that.
Okay, that's fine.
To the third page, second paragraph that. Say the reasoning behind the residential three hundred two program and three park and transition. As. As places. Visitors. Would be expected to part. Jonathan, in, in this one, we. The note say. Chair motion to sign the resolution, we need like additional detail about the fact that a resolution like the, that.
Which application.
So this is for brass, for the brass monkey down in twenty, or the twenty main. Uh, which is, there's no note of, of like, of a, a resolution being proposed. And, and that gave it was very straightforward, it was just like. There was, there were no conditions, it was just like. The resolution was, is it important to, to capture? The. Propose, the proposal to make the resolution, which, which I think is the thing that happens before.
Yeah, yeah, if, if possible, I mean, we have the, the written resolutions that, you know, memorialize who made the motion and. But if possible.
Okay, I don't remember. I don't remember how that particular one unfolded.
Yeah, I don't.
For the third page?
Yeah, the bottom is, they're, they're kind of near, towards the bottom of the third page, of course, it says Chair JSC motion to sign the resolution, I'm just noting that there's not a. There's no introduction of the resolution prior to that, it's just like, kind of appears out of nowhere. You know? And so just making sure that there's, we capture that. Someone made him, someone. Made a motion to adopt the resolution.
To.
To, you know, approve the, approve the application. As, you know, as, without, 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 I think that was without condition, so.
Uh, yeah, I mean, they all have the condition to pay the escrow fees, but.
Yeah, yeah. Not sure what this, African provided labeling. Oh, on the site, is it on the site plan?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll put on the site. All changes made in a, in red font, as we're putting on the site plan, what, what did you intend there? I'm just not sure how to, how to understand what the, what that's implying, that's like. Saying that this, this, they submitted a site plan that had. Changes in. Red on it, or?
Yeah, I think there's some changes that were. Required. So there were no changes to the signage, no changes to exterior lighting, but I think the changes that were required were indicated by red font on the site. Plan. Which I probably.
Maybe I'll just add all required changes.
How long do we leave up applications? On, on the village website, once we've approved something like six east. On Belvedere, then once it's approved, it goes away. Cause I was looking, I was looking for it, I was looking for some of the past, past ones, I was just curious.
Yeah, I think usually that, that was how it's been done in the past, I don't think it would be a bad idea necessarily to leave them up for a little bit longer.
You know, folders are cheap, we could just have a past applications folder that has all these ones.
Right.
I would prefer that, because. It's very useful to go back and look at old, old application.
So either a physical folder or?
I think on the website.
On the, on the, like, I, I just mean that, like, you know, when you click on the website, you have the planning board, and there's like a link to current applications. It could be like the, the past applications.
Okay.
Where, where we just move.
Archive.
Archive, basically remove old stuff.
Do you have like a time period? Just cause I've been, I've been erasing them, I mean, I just, I managed the website, at least a portion of the website. So I erase them just for.
You're doing great.
Yes.
Everybody else has been doing, and it was just, I was just curious.
Yeah.
I think if you, if we can make a, like, another page. To drop them on.
Okay.
Just like that is, that is previous application, instead of current application.
Okay.
And you can just drop them there, and you don't have to delete them. I think my perspective, like, I don't. I mean, maybe I'll complain to you in a couple of years. We can start deleting them, but, but I think for now, we can just leave them up.
Yeah, some municipalities will have, like archives that go back years and have all the minutes and agendas and applications, and. I'm not really a, a computer guy, so I don't know how much effort that takes and how much. Storage and memory you need to do that.
Nothing, but. Just good storage is so cheap now, but. The, the work required to make, to manage, maintain it varies depending on how old the, the policy is there. Uh, I don't wanna make more work. For you have a go, but.
Well, I think it would be easier for you guys to reference, especially in the long run, if I don't have to print out the, the physical.
Yeah.
Bits at your fingertips, so yeah, I can do that.
I believe. So Chair just introd- mentioned that he was not incentivized to see additional parking for his application. I think generally whenever. Whenever we make a statement like that, for, not just me, but for anyone, we followed up with like, if there was any rationale. For why that was true. Like, in this case. I'm, I think I mentioned the fact that the, there were, the number of exist, of existing uses. That also required a huge number of parking spaces.
Yeah.
Uh, and the fact that this was comparatively as, a small use in, in comparison with the other existing uses. So I'll, I'll add a little thing on the side.
Is it possible when we put members present, that you can put in parentheses or quotation marks? Our, pardon me, our initials, so that every time, cause I do notice that you. Put JSC, which to me is fine, but you know, for me, you could say HH, or eh, for Henry HF. I don't know if that's something you wanna do, or, or we feel that. The full name has to be present throughout the minutes.
No, I don't think there's any.
Problem with that? Way to make your life easier?
You could look on the first time, go board member Henry Feldman, brand HF, and then all subsequent ones just be two initials.
Oh, I don't remember what this. We say, down in board business. So Kevin McGory motion to adopt resolution that drafted and authorized the chair at the time. What resolution was that?
What meeting is that from?
June thirteenth.
It's the, it's the one where we had the hearing for.
Definitely refrigerator depressed monkey, wasn't it?
I think it might have been one of the.
Was it the?
Are there like headings within the minutes that show which application the board is talking about?
Well, in this, in this section, it, it moves on to the board business section.
Probably. An application. Prior.
That would have been. May twenty seventh. And that would have been.
Maybe.
Main Street, one thirty three, one thirty five main, yeah.
That's probably what that was.
Alright. Now, we go, you started. That was, was that your first, was the thirteenth your first meeting? What? Okay, so. So yeah, I think, I think that must have been it.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, alright, I'll.
You can always look at the video, right?
For. Use. Has draft unauthorized to sign that second. Okay. Think that, that does it, are they happy with, with the edits?
Yes.
Why don't you sign every page or something?
Do we need to make a move to approve? I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes of June thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Uh, second.
Alright. Alright. Jonathan, for the, for the public hearing that we opened. Five for. One forty three, one forty five main. Do we need to make a motion to resume it?
Uh, no.
Kind of assumed to be resumed.
Yeah, it's still.
And so it's still open, but we would, because we're in session, we would need to. Make a motion to. I guess adjourn.
Adjourn, yeah, to whatever our next date is, October.
Eight, tenth.
Yeah, so I guess I'll. A couple of notes about this. We gave feedback last time to the applicant about important things that were missing. And some violations of village code as it stands. And the clerk also reiterated those things afterwards to the applicant. We don't receive any, any. We're sorry, we received. An updated deck that did not address either of the main, main issues that we, that we pointed out, so. I think it's, unless folks really want to, to review that, the incremental update that they gave. Because we can adjourn. Discussion of, of it, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that like tablebing?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing for one thirty, one forty three, one forty five Main Street.
Second.
Which will be. October. Are you, and you're out for that?
I'm out for that, okay.
I'll be here.
Yeah, great. Uh, you second it, all favor?
Fine.
Uh, turned. Alright, let's um. Let's discuss forty main. So, Hillary, I don't know if you saw the, the documents that came by for forty main and some of the discussion that was happening.
This is the updated version, because before. She had like three here and five here, correct?
Yeah, there's.
That was, this is an update that we have.
We do have an update, there's some stuff to discuss about the nature of the update, but I just wanna make sure that we're. Just because we, you weren't here last time, I wanna make sure we're all working from the kind of the same. Spot, so. Uh, this is for forty main. The building itself is quite large, it has. The gym space that we approved, it has retail, a retail space next to it. And it has office space in the rear.
It has the apothecary too, right?
Yeah, that's right, that's what I meant by the, the retail space next to it, yeah, yeah. And actually, I don't know if the, the hair salon is personal, is additionally, is an additional use or it's folded into the.
Yeah.
Apostery. Anyway, big, big building. The. The use in question in terms of meeting the parking requirement is the office space use in the rear. Uh, and. That came before the previous planning board. Under an old code. Code has been updated. There was a. I don't know if you call it exotic, but a, 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 an agreement that, that satisfied the old. Board and the old code. But under the new code, it's more lax in, in terms of parking requirements than the old code, one of the purposes was reducing. The number of parking spaces required, given the various uses. And so the applicant is seeking to amend. An old planning board. Resolution. To fold in. You know, judgments about the new, the new parking requirements to. Basically resolve their parking requirements for this office space. And. While they, they own, um, the building behind. Uh, which has additional parking. And so, uh, while they, as they work here, a few spaces that they would basically be borrowing from that, from that property that they own.
Okay.
In order to meet their, their criteria for parking for the office space. But they have indicated they would, they would like to seek a, uh, a waiver from the village board or the parking, for all, for all the parking.
All of them?
All. And.
I thought they were just asking, they had, they were supposed to have seventeen, oh please, we just want to, we want eight.
Yeah, so the, the old code had that, had that much larger number.
Right.
The new code does not require that many.
Okay.
The new code, depending on how you calculate square footage, um, this end is either eight or six. That's something we'll talk about here in a second. But regardless where the number is eight or six, uh, they are seeking, um, uh, a, a, a. A waiver for, for all of them. And, um, uh, our role as a board, uh, is to, we, we grant the referral. But we can attach an opinion. So we could say, hey, village board, this applicant has requested parking waiver. We think we, you should give them all of them. Or do we think you should give them none of them, or we think we should, you should give them these three? Based on X, Y, and Z. And, um. So, uh. Today. Um, sorry, last time, uh, we noted, uh, there were some, um, ambiguities and discrepancies on the square footage. They were, they were using a square footage, they had, they had two square footage listed on the site plan. One was being used to calculate the number of spaces, which was at eight. But it was confusing because there were two. There's still two, they've now revised by using the smaller number, which basically excludes nonusable space. Which is not something that is. There's no, there's no provision for that in the code, like you, you, it's not, there's no difference between usable and unusable space. In terms of assessing the, the parking required, so. But the goal for, for this evening is because we don't, um, we don't fully, we basically don't have a site plan that I think we can, we can base, uh, a full letter on to send to the board, so it's not in its final state.
Okay.
And it's not as clear as I think we would like it to be. I think the goal for this evening is to come up with a list, a very clear list of asks and changes in order to get ourselves to be able to, as a group, next time, figure out what the, what the, the shape of a letter that would, that would accompany the referral, what the planning board would look like. So, um. In terms of. Uh, things that are on my mind that we need from the applicant, so. Last time was the first time we, I guess, I got to talk to applicant. And, uh. One of the things that I think is important for us to be able to make a determination about, what is an appropriate amount of spaces to grant a waiver is to understand what is the purpose of the waiver system? Was it originally designed for in the code? And, um, how does this use relate to that purpose? So, uh, the original intent, uh, and, and the writing of the, of the village waiver, the parking waiver system was for, you'll note it's only for Main Street. It's only for the B one district. And, um. It was, uh, meant to kind of accommodate a higher traffic situations where you expect people to come in and park for five minutes, do their business, or park for thirty minutes, do their business, or park for, you know, some smaller amount of time, not a full day.
Okay.
And then, and vacate. In this case, we're not talking about a retail space or a professional services space or any of those things, we're talking about an office space. Generally, I would expect office space to be, you go in and you sit down and you work until you're done and then you go home. That may, that may or may not be the case, I think that, but for me, that's a, that's a, helping us understand.
Yes.
What is the, what is the use, what is office space use? And what, uh, what about that use in, like aligns it to, uh, the, the intent of the waiver system? That makes sense for folks?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, one question I have, maybe this is out of order with what you have in mind, is, um, it says that they paid waiver fees for seventeen spaces in twenty twenty two.
Right, so I think that was for the, the front portion of the building or the, uh, the retail or whatever else it was back then, prior to the jail. And for the back, they needed all, even more spaces than that, maybe forty something.
Oh, so is this, so. A while back, like a couple of years or something like that, there was like some insurance company back office thing that was supposed to go in and they wanted to get some of the parking spaces over by River View, uh, the, uh, that lot.
That could be, I don't know, I'm not sure what, um, the nature of the business is that occupies the office space, but, uh, they did have, the, the property owner had an agreement, um, with the village board to essentially lease spaces from the village lot because they couldn't meet.
Right.
The off street requirements and the planning board wasn't willing to, to recommend, um, waivers for the office spaces.
Do you guys accept the single resolution or do we have it?
Oh, the original.
I think, yeah, forty main.
Oh, sure.
Would that help?
Yes.
When is that from, is that from May or?
This is from, oh, this is from date of adoption, October thirteen.
Okay, yeah, that's the right one, because they, they were here in May of that year. Came back once or twice to make like some minor changes in September, October, so. Yeah.
More than one resolution or?
Oh, there probably is, but only the, the last one is. I'm good, but yeah.
So are we getting this back because the village board bounced it or?
No.
We, we didn't, they didn't, they didn't give us everything we wanted last time.
Yeah, so. What it is, is as part of the agreement that the property owner had with the village board, they had to pay the village board a significant sum of money. But now that the code has changed and they don't need as many spaces, there's really no reason for that agreement to continue. They don't need forty off street spaces, so they'd rather amend their site plan such that the off street parking is no longer covered by the parking agreement. But instead, either waive, regular waivers or parking in their other, their adjacent property.
I'm not clear as to, um. Why they want absolutely zero, because they, they already have several garage structures.
It's not, it's not for that, for this property.
Oh, I'm sorry, so it's.
So as I understand, the same, the same owners own both parcels.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that a double dip? Kind of thing?
So we're, we're, so we're, got it, because when you're looking at forty, it's despite the fact we've got.
Yeah.
Railroad Road or whatever it's called.
So, so this is, this is the property here.
Yes, yes. Yep, got it.
From, I think from simplicity sake, we can treat it as an independent thing. Especially given that they're seeking the waivers. In a situation where they're not seeking the waivers and they, and then they say, look, we can, we can make an agreement with ourselves because we own this other building.
Yes.
And, and basically lend parking spaces.
Yes.
To it, and so that is allowed in the code, and so that would be something we, we would entertain. So it's like, it's like a thing that can be, that is available to us. Um, and maybe, maybe weighs in on whether, like how we feel about the granting of the waiver. Um, I tend to try to separate them out in my own head, um, just like try to evaluate this on its own merits of like this. Is the, is the waiver the right thing to do for this business and this property? And then if not, then we say, okay. Well, we, we made the referral, we've made, we've attached our letter, uh, and our judgment about what we think is the right thing to do. Whatever happens, happens, and whatever we get back, like maybe the village board grants all of them, maybe they grant none of them. Uh, but then we can decide, okay. You know, if there's like three spaces still required, then we say, okay, uh, well, you can meet them by borrowing from this. We'll figure out what to do there, you can meet them by going to the zoning board and they can grant the variance, so you don't, you don't have to meet the requirement. But that's a bridge we crossed when we got there.
Ms. Strauss mentioned something about she didn't want to commit herself to future development. And I wasn't quite sure.
Oh, this, this, that's, that has to do with the fact that, yeah, so, uh. There, there's a quirk here where it's like, you know, uh, every. Every lot has a use. Uh, well, either it's not, not being used at all, or it has a use. And the use dictates the parking requirements. So you can imagine that you own this building, uh, in case it's the same, the same applicant, and they, um, they say, okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lend this, my spaces to, to my, to my, to my other building, which is, um, on, um, on, uh.
Main Street.
On Main Street. And then, and this is currently not, not used, they, they, the applicant mentioned that this building is not any.
Vacant, right.
Yeah, vacant. In a future world where they, uh. Resume whatever the previous use was before the vacancy, wouldn't necessarily come before the planning board. Uh, which means there wouldn't necessarily be any, any evaluation of the use that was there. As like, what, what, what were the spaces that were needed for that? So, um, it, it, it's a totally overcomeable thing, we would basically, if we wanted to pursue that route, we would add some condition in that said, okay, you can borrow from this, from this other building.
Now.
Now, but if, if the, if the use, if, if it becomes used. Then it comes back before the planning board and, and we have to evaluate, uh, you know. Something like, something like that, Jonathan Woodward's method in a legally appropriate way. So that was, that was that, what that discussion was about. Also interestingly enough, because that building is not on Main Street, it's not in the B one district and, and would not be allowed to get, um, waivers.
Right.
I, I will say, I, I. Subtracting out bathroom seems very suspect.
Yeah, I think, uh, Jonathan mentioned, uh, uh, to me that, that he's read the protest, that's not, uh.
Yeah, the, the code doesn't distinguish between quote unquote usable and unusable.
Yeah, and it's usable, so.
Hopefully, hopefully. Okay, so I, I, the two, the two things I have on here so far are, um, we would like the, um, the applicant to, to provide some justification for how, um, how the use, the office space use aligned with the waiver system insofar as it was designed to accommodate short-term parking uses. Um, as in, um, like retail or personal services. The other is a, um, making clear, uh, the square footage, uh, we have two square footage listed. And we have the usable square footage and the gross square footage. As it currently stands, it's not really clear. It's not clear on the, on this drawing exactly what vault, like volume of space or area of space in the bill, in the building structure that thirty eight, eight, one applies to. I think the assumption is that it's everything behind the mid separating wall, but it would be great to have that explicit drawn out. And, um, and then the usable part, uh, removed and just the note that it's, that it, the, um, the full eight.
Can we also ask for photos? Or is that not?
Yeah.
It, it, it would help me because it's kind of a obmeration. Well, of.
Of the office space?
Uh, yeah, of, of forty main and. In the office space, yes, so all of forty main. All three, just for clarity. Yeah, you're absolutely right for clarity. The office space, the office space and. Because the office space.
So could you just one more time? So I got the second one, the clarity on the square footage, uh, is that the question for thirty eight oh one and thirty eight eighty one?
I think it's, I think whatever it is, they just need to clearly and accurately show what the square footage is for the office space, because it's not really clear whether thirty eight eighty one is for the office space or for the whole building or for the office space and some other portion of the building, so.
Yeah, some outline.
Yeah.
Outline this, the, the outer edge.
Right, and maybe tell it, or something, just so it's really clear.
And what happened to the parking and the pooping?
I think they, when they revised their estimate down to six from eight, they basically dropped them.
So. Clarity on the square footage, the photos, and what was the first additional request? I didn't catch that one.
Uh, so that, um, we would like the applicant to help us understand the way in which the office was going to be used and whether or not they felt it aligned to the short-term parking uses that the waiver was intended to excuse. So like, what? So like, really just, we want them to make an argument for, do they expect people to be, to come in, commute to the office and sit there, stay there all day, or is there some way in which the office is being used as like popping, popping in for meetings and then going home or like?
Oh, we work.
Yeah, we, we work, might be a, a good argument for, um, for a different client, style of use, but we just, we need more detail about. The main thing is we just need more detail about like, what's the style of office space that it is, like how is it being used? What, like how, how many people tend to be there, uh, how long do they tend to stay?
Right, maybe how many desks or computers there are, because it could be a big space that really doesn't have that many.
Yeah.
Employees.
Yeah.
Might be worth asking, you know, whether, uh, customers or clients, uh, come to the office.
Yeah.
To.
Yeah.
And then we want the total office space to not exclude the bathrooms.
Right, yeah, they, the, um, you can't exclude any portion of the square footage. The code counts it all, whether it's bathroom, stairs, closets.
Okay, so. In an email, sorry, I just caught this, it says total office space square footage of, actually, I don't know if that part's clear, thirty eight oh one, usable square footage of twenty nine eighty three.
Yeah, that's what's in, that's what's on the site plan right now.
Well, actually, it's, it's a little bit different because the email you said says thirty eight oh one, right?
Yeah.
And the site plan says thirty eight eighty one, so even that's not consistent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I sent her an email about that actually, and then her response was it's only off by eighty feet, but she did not clarify.
Which one is not?
It's okay.
And regardless, you know, even if it's off by ten feet, it's gotta be accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm proving the site plan.
Yeah. We just need, like, and, and for what it's worth, like, it's fine for her email to type, but we just need to know the site plan is, is. It's fine for her email to type, but we just need to know the site plan is, is the, the authorized number.
Cause the board shouldn't be approving site plans or amended site plans and saying, well, you know, we know it's really thirty-eight oh one. But the plan says thirty-eight eighty-one, so we're just gonna let it go.
Um, so did you get those, those three?
Yeah, um.
If you would like to send me a draft.
Yeah, I can do that. Before sending it to her.
Yeah, before. Um, any other, other things that folks feel like would be helpful in order to? Know, like, how to craft the, you know, how, how we wanna craft an opinion to go along with the, or what?
Okay.
All right, we can, uh, move on to the added items, if she's belladere, um. Um, it is, as I explained before, we approved. Um, before with the condition that the recreation fee be paid prior. To the approval of. Uh, be, before the signing of the, of the, um, plaque.
Yep.
And that can't happen. Or it can, but it, but it, but it will happen at a very protracted time, if we wait for the village board. To figure out. How they, what, how they want to amend the code, uh, or I guess they don't have to amend the code to do it, they just have to, they just have to.
That's it, after resolution.
After resolution.
Take the piece.
Be scheduled. Uh, but, um. We don't, if we don't want to make the applicant wait an indefinite amount of time in order for that to get resolved, then. We have an, uh, an ability to amend. Um, the resolution, uh, to instead, uh, make the condition. Uh, that. Um, uh, that's the, um, that the recreation fee. Be paid prior to the issuing of a building permit of an eventual, of, of, in the official development of, of the lot. And that, and that that condition be attached to the plaque. Does it also need to be a declaration, or are we considered?
Yeah, so I can actually, I can read the, uh, the proposed, uh, condition, so. It would be a, a motion to amend the approval of September twelfth. Uh, such that. A fee in lieu of an acceptable recreation site, as set forth in the village's master fee schedule. Must be paid to the village prior to the issuance of any building permits for parcel B. The applicant must place a note on the plaque and report a declaration with the county clerk stating the same.
Sounds good.
So do we have a, a motion to make that amendment to the approval?
I make a motion to amend it as, uh, Jonathan, uh, just outlined.
I tried that once and it didn't work for me, it shouldn't work for you. Okay, I make a motion, amend the resolution, but we approved, um, September the twelfth. Uh, regarding the recreation fee should be, should be paid prior to the initial development. And that no permits would be issued until such fee is paid.
And a note be added to the plaque and.
And the note be added to the plaque.
And a declaration be recorded with the county clerk.
And a declaration be recorded with the county clerk of Plutnam County, New York.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Oh, favorite.
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, and then, uh, with that in mind, do we have a motion to adopt the written resolution? Memorializing the approved, the verbal approval from the last meeting and the amendment that was just approved.
You mind if I read it?
Sure.
Yep. Straddling two meetings.
How big of a, a fee is this?
The village hasn't decided yet.
Is it thirty-five, did I hear that?
They tend to be between two and five.
Hundred?
Yeah.
Wow.
But, uh, usually that's a max, and the, the village short, or town board has some discretion to, to lower it. Based on the specifics of the project.
You mentioned, uh, that the memo, uh, was with regard to water supply, does that, does water supply include? Uh, sewer and supply?
Yeah, so the sewer, um, last meeting, you didn't require them to satisfy anything. In that regard, it's a condition because the village does have.
Correct.
A sewer line that runs down.
So it's, it was technically noted in the memo, but not relevant for the resolution.
Correct.
Alright, so the, um. So, just so I'm aware, the where, the whereas clause is set up the context.
Yeah.
And then the resolve, it reflects here, yeah.
Dude.
Yeah.
And the action of the board.
Yeah. Did we? Don't see the note about where we waived. The requirement to update the street. That is a requirement, right, it is a requirement, it's a private street, we're treating it as a private street with respect to the application.
Mm-hmm.
The requirement is that, uh, that the street be brought up to code, and we want, we waived that.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, if it's not in there, you can even just write it in, cause it definitely was waived, uh, as part of the verbal approval.
Yeah, 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 uh, let me just double check, make sure I'm not missing something.
That I don't.
Yeah, we're just missing that. So I'll add at the bottom, um. Whereas. The planning board. Uh. Uh. I guess it was, it was in that, it was in that meeting, so whereas on. September. Twelfth. Four. Planning board waived. The requirement. That. Um. Uh, the, uh, private street. Streets. Uh. He spoke here. Be brought up, be brought up to code.
Yeah, yeah, be brought up to the standards set forth in the village code.
Okay. Whereas on September twelfth, uh, twenty. Twenty-four. The planning board waived the requirement that the private street to be spelled, to be brought up to the standard set forth in the village code.
Sounds good.
Um. Uh, resolved, the planning board hereby determines that the position of the proposed subdivision, including the general site. Object to support chapter one eleven, which is in code, further resolved. The application of Jonathan Maranda, uh. To allow for subdivision, property creation of a new parcel B hereby granted. Uh, and the subdivision plan prepared by, uh. Uh, his engineer, I'll pass his name again, um, Larry Lynn, and dated August seventh. What was that though?
So I think it's, um, yeah, dated August seventh, last revised, uh, September twelve.
Twelve, oh, yeah, sorry, by the company, it would have, I would have gotten it. Uh, maybe some of the chair, we should know the following conditions. The applicant must pay all tenebrous fees that the village of Cold Spring may be required to protect the application. A fee in lieu of acceptable recreation site, as set forth in the village master fee schedule, must be paid to the village prior to the issuance. Of any village, of any building permits for, for, for parcel B. The applicant must place a note on the plaque and a record of decoration, declining, with the county clerk stating the same. The applicant must place a note on the plaque and a record, uh, recorded declaration. With the county clerk stating that prior to the issuance of a building permit. The plans for parcel B must incorporate stormwater management. Measures designed by a licensed professional engineer, consistent with the village code, all applicable, applicable laws and regulations. Uh, which stormwater management measures must be installed. And inspected by the village prior to the distribution of occupancy. Uh, on the language there. Is there? Uh. I'm curious, like, this doesn't specifically tie to the recommendations that were set forth.
So I think that's what they have. In the, on the plan, and that will okayed.
Okay.
So this is for the, the stormwater, not for the, the water supply?
No, that's what I mean, for the stormwater.
Right.
The details of the stormwater mitigation. I just wanna make sure that, like, the, the language in the resolution, which just says. Uh. That they must incorporate stormwater mitigation measures designed by a licensed professional engineer. Uh. Is there? Is there a way to? Is it important, is it, does it specifically link to the, the, um. The, the, the design proposed in the application?
Right, yeah, I don't think it has to, and, um, I think it could get a little bit tricky trying to link it to that. If, you know, this goes years down the road before anything gets built, and then you're trying to go back to this design and. Maybe something has changed, or.
I'm wondering, is it, is it, would it be reasonable to put the, the, there, there were two things that were important about the stormwater mitigation? They were, uh, that it, it reduced. Uh, the load, the stormwater runoff load on the site at max buildout. Uh, for a twenty-five year event.
Uh-huh.
Is, is, is that sufficient to, is that something that we could add in?
Yeah, I think you could.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Um.
So that maybe you wanna do a motion to amend to add that, uh, as part of the condition?
Correct. Uh, how do people feel about that?
Uh, I mean, I think that's fine, my recollection is that, um, the engineer basically said that. These like three. Containers.
Yeah.
For an example.
Yeah.
Of a way of mitigating, I don't think that that was a, this site must. Have this particular approach.
Yeah, I think it was, it was, it was showing that under, that there was a solution. That could be employed under a max buildout that would reduce the load.
Right.
And I think the thing, the thing, I wanna make sure that we have here is something that says. Okay, it's not, you don't, it's not just you have to have stormwater mitigation that's approved. It needs, it needs to, uh, and it's actually the bill, uh, it, it, like. Uh, it just, it needs to, um, since we know it's possible, given the analysis that was done. It needs to reduce, like, given some proposed bill, it needs to reduce. Uh. It needs to reduce the, um, stormwater runoff for the site.
Right.
Uh, in the event of a twenty-five year, uh, weather event. Rain event, or a storm, I don't know what that word is. Doesn't seem.
Yes, and it doesn't matter what, nothing he uses just as long.
Yeah, like, yeah, 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 I think that's, that, that makes more sense, it's like, it's like, like, these are the, these are the requirements that we have for the site. That it, that, that it, that it reduced the stormwater runoff. Um, it, the actual, whether it's those four, or it's, you know, if something else is okay. As long as it's approved by the village engineer to, to accomplish that.
Sure.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Um.
Is there a, a document to reference?
Well, the fifth condition is compliance with any outstanding technical comments raised by the villagers. Do you, does it go in with that, or would it go in with three? Which is, um, about the stormwater management specifically, or would it be a six?
I think it would go with three, probably.
Okay.
The, the last one is really just a catch-all.
Okay. Um, alright, so. Nine. Year. Signed by a licensed professional engineer, um. That. Reduce. Stormwater. Um, runoff. For the site, for the, for. The built site. And the event. And the, and, and a. Twenty-five year. Rain event? Weather event?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, more of an engineering, uh, question, but yeah, I think so.
Do you stormwater runoff for the built site? Uh, so you're under a. Twenty, twenty-five year. Event, uh.
Whatever.
Scenario. Yeah, uh, do whether. One, two.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh. Um.
In that vein, I do have a question.
Yeah.
If I may. One of, uh, during the, the public comment, one of the neighbors, uh, was concerned. That with the water, uh, in the sewer, that there was going to, his, uh, yard was gonna be torn up.
Yeah.
Is that, is that not true?
Uh.
Well, you're smiling, so I'm not sure if that was an exaggeration, or if that's necessary.
It would have to be. Negotiated, like, you can't, you can't just like go dig up someone's.
Of course.
Yard, um.
But on the other hand, can, and it's not a village street or a road, but on the other hand, can you say, well, this is. You know. In a way, um, help enriching the community by having this. This water main or whatever he's doing, but at, at the same time, as you say, you have to somehow. Uh, mitigate and to offset whatever damage you've done.
Yeah, I mean, so the, the planning board's approval won't empower the applicant to tear up anybody else's yard.
Okay, but chances are he would have to do that, am I correct or not?
It could be, yeah. And if the other, if the neighboring property owners say, no, I'm not gonna let you do that, then that could be a problem.
A mess, okay.
Well, there's.
That's what I see.
I don't, I think that the yard thing. I don't, I think that the yard thing, it's more that the the property, some of the property lines go to the middle of the street, so technically they would have to dig up.
Right.
What technically on their property, but but I think there are, there are provisions for like, like a de facto street has. Has some protections to it, right?
It could be, but that's really more of a a private property.
Yeah.
Not our problem.
Yeah, not our problem.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. So this is dated um today, was it today or last time?
So this would be today, uh, at the resolution.
By twenty six, twenty four. Alright, well, good thing we read it.
Uh, and did, did we actually have a motion and a vote to adopt the uh the written resolution?
Here I am.
So I I uh make a motion that we approve. The resolution of the planning board uh granting subdivision approval at six east Belvedere. Uh, into an A and a B property uh with uh handwritten changes done by chairman. Um, and um, yeah, does that sound good?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright.
All favor?
Alright.
Alright, so Jesse can sign, and what I can do is I can um. Type up those changes in Word, uh, as long as I don't make any substantive changes, Jesse can sign again, and that way we have a clean copy.
Okay.
Um, oh, we should mark the votes on that.
Yeah.
Alright, um. That's it.
I have something to say.
Oh, yes.
Several weeks ago, it may have been a couple of months ago, I suggested coming up with the checklist.
Yeah.
I, I've been out of town, out of the country for several weeks, so I wanna make a. A a contract that I will have something by our second meeting in October. Next week is my birthday, so I'm not committing to anything, so, but the second, uh, the second Thursday of October, I'll have something for. People to look at or before, so that you can make comments online about.
Great, uh. As a, just as a a a reminder, like, um, you should definitely review in advance and you should make comments for yourself. Uh, we should discuss here.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Um, and and and, yeah.
And then, still, I mean, uh, review what the zoning board had done. Some of.
Oh, yeah, 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 great.
Alright.
Well.
And um, and one of the two guys who isn't here had raised a question about um. Meeting schedule for the rest of the year, I don't know if you want to like block out Thanksgiving, Christmas, that kind of thing.
Yeah, what's the, what's the village's holiday policy usually?
So it's really up to you guys, actually, um.
We can be on Thanksgiving if we want.
Uh.
I will not be here.
Maybe, I don't know if anybody's gonna come.
They could actually, oh, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if it's the right Thursday, but.
It is. Yeah, it's the fourteenth of November and the twenty eighth.
Do you remember if you adopted a meeting schedule at the beginning of?
There was a.
Okay, does that leave flexibility then?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you got flexibility either way, you could always just just make a motion to amend the the meeting schedule and, but um, I mean, you can definitely just cancel that meeting.
Yeah.
But probably, usually that time of year, there's not a lot of applications anymore.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not planning on being here on the uh Thanksgiving, so.
I won't be here either.
That's fine, that's fine.
I think one, something maybe for him, so.
It's my sister's birthday, actually.
Do you, uh, sense that we're slowing down on?
Oh, have we adjourned?
We're not, because that was an option, they were turning it.
Uh, move the we adjourn.
All in favor?
Oh, I have a second.
Yeah.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Okay, alright, great. Turn.
And sense that things are slowing down, I feel?
Yeah, I would say so.
Thank you.
Um.
Abigail.